Yes.
That will record you, Mr. Mayor.
Seven o'clock, the overall is constantly being in order. I want to introduce to the right, the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mark Grazer.
Ben Keel.
City clerk, city administrator, city attorney, and that. President Kangas, city engineer, and Sean, city maintenance.
Councilmember Otto will have the good spin. Mr. Mayor, do you need to turn your mic up a little bit towards you so we can hear you? Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion for approval of the agenda.
With the additions?
With the addition of reward for burglary and fee for commercial cargo used and cooler for concession stand.
Close under, hold under new business?
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, new business and parking rec. Commercial.
Under parking rec, item three concession stand cooler.
And a little business to the commercial.
Under combo site.
Combo site.
Fee for commercial dollar. And under new business, see reward for burglary.
So do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, would you like to move the request for council action up to the beginning of, after the consent agenda?
Yes, we'll move to that, the term thing after approval of the agenda. So I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. I'll sign that. Motion by Henry, second by Johnson. Otto, uh, Johnson, I go. All right. Mark?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I go to aye. Carry forward. Okay, then we'll move on to that.
Consent agenda?
Consent agenda. On the consent agenda, action needed, motion to approve.
I have a change to the minutes for April fourteenth. At three, three five P M, the special minutes, the discussion was Rock Brook West Storm Water Treatment Pond. In the first, or the first paragraph, it should read, M C A design standards require that a wet pond holds a minimum of three to four feet. And in the last paragraph, in the motion, the, the west lot lines from the south lot line of seven thirteen group circle west, P I D one one two zero three three zero zero two zero eight zero to Seventh Street South.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll sign all that motion.
Motion by Mark, second by Ben. I go to aye. Ben?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Grazer?
Aye.
Forty-two, four.
We're on a request for council action.
Oh, that's. Request for council action. Ben, Brad.
Hello, my name is Ben Graff. I live at seven four Seventh Street North. And I would like to propose an amendment to Montrose's city ordinances to allow wind turbines under lots of size twenty-five acres. So, allowed in points in basically residential areas. A lot of older cities are allowing this, and I think it would make Montrose more attractive. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yep.
I see down the bottom, if you would like to assist again, creating that amendment to our statutes.
Yep.
I would like to propose that we form a committee that, that deals specifically with the limitations of size, safety regulations, insurance, design quality, and placement of wind turbines, so that we get, make it look like a proper amendment.
Okay.
And I would like you to be on it. I also would volunteer to be on that, and I would like to ask Barb, maybe Sean, if you're interested. And anybody else. But I think this is a worthwhile subject.
Okay.
Would you be?
I'd, I would.
Okay.
What type of units are these, are these ones mounted on a house, or are they kind of whole?
Um, I guess that's where we get into specifics. It could be in-ground, it could be built on a house, depending on what we come up with in this council. I'm just proposing any kind of wind turbine, as long as it doesn't fall and hit a house of any size.
See, one time I seen some of that mounted right on the roof, look like a vent to a house. Is this the type that you would consider?
I was referring to freestanding ones, where they stand like a tree. A ten-foot wind turbine recreational home-built. That's what I would be going for, personally.
How big is the, the wheel span?
Uh, five to six feet.
Was it created, you know, instantly?
Uh, that all depends on the type of blades you have. So you can write that in your ordinance to, has to be less than a certain decimal rating. You know, a certain type of blade style. So, it can be as loud or as quiet as you want.
See, you got your new blades now, but you got your wind different for wind turbines, for noise-wise. Because if you go down the Spirit Lake, Iowa, where you got your great big monster down there, you stand underneath a tower, you can hardly have to turn about that. But I haven't seen those that were mounted right on the house, and then you wouldn't have to worry about falling or tipping over.
Yeah, you could do that one too.
Just like the house bent, so you wouldn't have no extra. I wouldn't load an alarm on my road.
It's a personal choice of that, right now.
Yeah.
So following this committee putting together some information and kind of a draft of what we would want in ordinance to say, the process would be that that would be given to the planning commission for their review. They would hold a public hearing, they would make the recommendation to the city council, and then the city council would make the final decision. But it will, will go through the planning commission for their review and comment.
They don't make a what person wants a generator, correct, which you're gonna follow?
Yep. You would specify limitations in the ordinance, and then also the big ones, falling radius, you know, how far it can fall or hit something, insurance versus not having the electrical company inspect it and stuff like that.
So that's everything else, right?
Yes.
So, um, the reason, if I can speak on your behalf, before you, the reason Ben is coming to the council is because he's asking the city of Montrose to support this investigation into having a wind turbine ordinance and paying for, the city paying for it, rather than Ben paying for an ordinance amendment. Because the way our zoning rules work is that typically the resident would pay for the zoning amendment. But in this case, Ben's point of view is that it would benefit the whole population, not just him, therefore asking the city of Montrose to put the bill.
What is the, the application cost to the planning zoning?
Three hundred dollars for the fee and then the cost of the planners report, which runs between five hundred and a thousand dollars.
Buffalo School with that big one up over there, and now they got power lines coming from that one into town. Buffalo buys power from Buffalo School, make sure and obviously. So they're gaining, the schools gaining there with that route.
Yep.
Selling power to the city of Buffalo.
Yep. You could do the same thing in your house.
Yeah, I'd like to be on that committee, help.
I think it's a, I think it's a worthwhile to at least do the research, so that we can get to the point where the council is up to speed to decide whether or not we want to go forward with a recommendation to planning zoning. Now, I agree with that too. So, would we need a motion on that, Ben?
Okay.
All right. Let's, let's see what we can do here. All right, I'll make a motion that, before I do that, is there anybody else? As far as the council goes, two of us could be on there without hosting an open meeting. If somebody wants to take, if somebody's interested and want to take my place, that's fine, if you want.
Well, if I get an upgrade on it.
But, well, there are two of us.
Yeah, you did.
How about you, Ben?
I'm, I'm fine with the.
But that's.
But, yeah, that's, I'm fine there.
So, and Sean, do you have any feedback on that, or?
No.
Do you have a move on that?
Sure.
Okay. Barb, are you? All right. All right, so I make a motion that, that we form a committee with Ben, Barb, myself, Mayor, to study up on this, look into these, the, what we need as far as the limitations of size, safety regulations, insurance, design, quality, and placement of wind turbines, so that we can bring forth a recommendation to the planning and zoning committee.
I'll sign that. Okay. Motion by Mark, to bring recommendations together, that we can go in front of planning and zoning and recommend how much wind turbine we cost for the city.
Uh, not, not the city.
For the city, but it's for an update on price rise, how much this would cost us. And we had Mark, myself, and Sean, and Barb involved on the committee, and Mayor.
Okay.
Would you want, you know, if any others, if any other residents wanted to assist on that, or use the input, or just keep it, just keep it like that for now?
You, you say you live out that way, no?
Yep.
Have you talked to any of your neighbors and stuff about that?
Those are on the corner from me.
But have any of your neighbors talked to you about it, or you talked to them?
I talked to them. One of them was like, yeah, sure. The other one's an engineer, and he's all for it, so, yeah.
Okay. I don't know, I'll answer your question.
Okay.
I guess I'm open to that if there is, you know, if.
If there's another citizen. Because, you know, I commend you, you know, bringing this up to us as something that's looking to the future of trying to be above, in front of the wave of people coming in.
If, if there are people that we feel that we need to bring in on a consulting basis, or something like that, if they would come in, like, like your neighbor, the engineer, or something like that, that they, um, but to keep it strictly a volunteer base.
Yep, yep, exactly.
And a non-paid.
Right, yeah.
So, and then we have to share information as we're getting it together.
Okay.
Wait, what do you vote?
All right, Ben?
Aye.
I go to aye. Okay, carry forward. Make sure that Barb gets your, all your contact.
I have.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For it's the city by the commission, I mean. We have a four.
I'd like to hear what, everyone in the city council reports.
Yep.
I have been going to the, the Wright County Board meetings specifically concerned about the Trailblazer Transit and the soon-to-be out of business River Rider. For some reason, Mindot has decided that July first is the end for River Rider out of Buffalo. And they have told Trailblazer Transit that they want them to take over Wright County. Right now, they're simply in the cloud. So the cities have all gotten together and asked if the Wright County Board would do the negotiating with Trailblazer Transit. And that did not go well. After, I believe, their second meeting, they, their board decided that they took a vote, it was unanimous, that they would no longer deal with Wright County. Couple of commissioners that were on the negotiating committee already had it in their mind that they didn't want this to work. So the cities have gotten together, and right now, they're in the midst of doing a joint powers agreement, so that we could then, however many cities join in, we can then vote and send two representatives to sit on that. It would be a six-person board. And so, it's in the, but we're trying to hustle to make sure that there are still rides available, especially for like functional industries. And Mindot has been helpful, and, and Trailblazer has been helpful. And it looks like they may even waive some of the buy-in money. They may even front us that money until, because they've realized that the cities have already got their, their budgets done, and it's a whole different ballgame, but they're, they are cooperative, and I, you know, I'm very impressed with the way all the city administrators are working together to try to pull this thing off. So, it's been a process. There has been some myths, truths that have been told to us by Wright County, some of the Wright County Board members. And so that's where we have stepped in as far as the city's goal. So, I have been spending way more time than I wanted to, but this has been a concern, and I wanted to make sure that we were represented, even though we don't have rides or riders on the River Rider right now. It is our hope that Highway twelve, the cities along Island, will be represented in the future as far as having that ability or that option to have public transit. That's all I have. I have nothing.
I don't have much on mine either, except we have the pad on the combo thing out there, and it seems to be working great. We appreciate it. That's about it. Okay, would you go on to the community center, Andy?
Has it been all the way up there? Okay, good evening. I put together a memo on the community center front doors. As you recall, we received a grant for the automatic door openers for the handicap accessibility. But we also need to replace the locking device on those front doors. They repair them about as many times as what we can repair them. They're, the device itself is pretty much worn out. So I got a quote from Russ, Russell's Security, who does all the work on our doors here. And he gave me the estimates for repairing the lock system on the front door, and then also putting the handicap accessibility stuff on the door, operator system on the door. So that, those two of those together, minus the amount of money we got from the grant, would be about twenty-seven hundred fifty-five dollars that the city would have to pay. And then the wiring, we estimate, is somewhere between five hundred and seven hundred and fifty. So I'm asking for the council to make a motion to approve up to thirty-five hundred dollars to have the front door repaired and the handicap accessibility system put on and the wiring all done.
Wondering, with that, if, if we get this going now, will we still be within our timetable as far as any of the amendments done before elections?
Yep. It has to be done by, like, the first of August to get it sent into the state for the grant money, so.
Oh. And so we're still within that time?
Right. The voting booths have been purchased there here, so that, that one's good to go, we just need to do it. We actually budgeted to fix that door, and when we did the budget this year, we budgeted to have that door repaired. He had given me a quote already back when we were doing budget, and now he just gave me an updated one.
Did we do the door, and when, did he do the molding, or anything, to the cold area?
Well, all I got for the quote was the locking device on the doors. I mean, I can have our guys, maybe we can just put some scripting around it, I don't know.
Take the bottom part where the roof is all rusted.
Yeah, our guys can probably get that. Our puzzle works, guys.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the fixing the front doors, so we get the handicap accessible button on.
Up to?
Up to twenty-seven hundred.
Thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred.
That includes all the wiring.
Thirty-five hundred dollars to complete the project on the front doors of the community center.
Second.
Motion seconded by Mark. Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I go to aye, Mark?
Aye.
Motion carried forward. And, uh, by any quarter, okay?
We're through the first quarter, and March actually was the end of the first quarter, which means we're about twenty-five percent of the way through our budget. Couple highlights that I hit on was the revenue, if you notice, on our percentage of our year-to-date budget is low because we haven't, we don't get our tax settlement or our LGA money until the very end of June, usually the beginning of July. Enterprise funds, which are the six-hundred accounts, water super accounts, they're always one month behind for collection, because then we bill, you know, you have to twenty of them months to pay. And so far this year, we've already had, at the, at the end of March, we'd already had six new building permits for new homes, so we're doing really good with our building permits so far this year. That was just for new homes. Expenditures, the only thing that might stand out in expenditures is we make our debt service payments in February and August, so the first ones of the year have been made, which includes most of the principal payments, so those will look a little higher, they'll be higher than twenty-five percent, because those have been done. E D A is a little high because they purchased the Highway twelve banners, but the money was budgeted already last year for it, so there was money there for it, just. And we already made our payment, we make the payment once a year for that fiber optic that comes out of Capitol Project, so. Other than that, everything is right in line, actually is. Really good. We're below, expenditure-wise, we're below twenty-five percent for everything. Like I said, revenue is always a little behind because of our tax collection.
Thank you. Fire department, anything? Okay, then we're gonna move on, parking recreation, maybe updated.
Do you want to, I wish you'd get up here and talk about that. Okay, park meant on May sixth, last Tuesday. There are a couple of things they wanted to break before the council. They, they discussed about the dog parks, and they're gonna do a little more research regarding the dog parks. The community gardens, the, the park commission went through the rules or regulations, whatever you wanna call them, and the application, and made a few, few changes or a few items they'd like to see on those. So, I guess they're looking for a, they recommend that the council approve the community garden rules and regulations and applications with changes that I've listed.
Uh, I have a question about that. On the application, which is page thirty-five of your package, there's a garden required tilling in the spring here, so no? I, I understand that Jim, that he likes to till his own out there, and that's, and that's just those four plots. But I, I'm concerned about opening that whole can of worms for the, a wrap-up location. I would like to see, and Sean, give me your feedback, I would like to see us be able to go there and till that whole spot, because, you know, Murphy's Law is gonna, one person in the middle is missing, I want to till my own, and then we're gonna have to pull out, go around, and then get started all over again. I would just like to retain control of that.
Just don't put that part in there, because of the one on Northridge, we know they take care of it all, so.
Right.
Just don't include that.
Yeah, I, I'm not comfortable with that either.
Yeah, you, I agree, either, either they, they all get tilled, or none of them get tilled. Because, yeah, if you do, like Mark's saying, if you do have two that are, you know, not even back-to-back, you know, one must be tilled, not tilled, tilled, not tilled, you know, how do you jump between them?
More time, so.
Yeah.
First thing, do we, do we just till them in the spring?
Never in the build?
Yeah. But I mean, you know, in the future, and we, we don't do it in the fall, so.
And Jim has already tilled his own, right?
Correct. Yeah.
I think all of them are.
Yeah, that's in Northridge, but I mean, that wrap-up one, you've seen it now, it's a nice straight line there, and, uh, that's, I would like to make sure that we do it right, and just make sure that it's done. and just make sure that it's done all at the same time. So if, if they could take that out?
Sure. These were just some of their recommendations, so you can approve it. Probably see fit, so we can remove that.
Mr. Mayor, I have one I'd like to talk about. Garden will be allowed the same plot each year when possible. I'd like to remove that. I think that, you know, if you have ten plots and you have plot one and plot three, maybe now nobody's gonna take plot two, it just gets enough to be another maintenance problem, I think that.
I think it's funny if you jump from one to three or one to four, why can't you take the ones in between?
Yeah, that's what I think, if you, you know, you take, there's only gonna be three plots, you take one, two, three, you don't take one, three, five.
I know their big concern, Jim was at, at the garden, at the park meeting, his big concern was they put money into the ground and do their gardening, but they also have to remember this is public land, city land, it's, yes.
You know, if he's gonna have that, you know, issue for the garden, it's all back here.
Right, so I, I mean, I agree with Barb, I think it should be, just, I mean, if they, if they have number three this year and there's nobody at number two next year, we're gonna, they're gonna have to go to number two because we're not gonna keep tilling around them.
I'm, I'm trying to understand it from Jim's perspective, and I understand that that stuff, the special dirt and the compost and everything else, he spent a lot of money on that stuff. And I'm trying to think through it, if somebody, say if there was somebody in one, had a rapaho and nobody in two, and somebody in three, would we, we're gonna till it the same anyway, why would we move them if they've already got a year, that, let's say this summer they went out there and invested in the compost, they're playing in three? Would it be right to force them to go to like two, if there were only two people the next year? I.
Who's gonna maintain two?
I understand that.
If we, you know, if we till it up and have ten and nobody takes them, we're gonna probably seed it back to grass and have a smaller garden because we're not gonna be able to keep maintaining it, somebody has to maintain it with the weeds.
Well, if I wasn't three, I would make sure that I keep a barrier, you know, hey, if they have the weed somebody else's plot or I'm planting or I'm using lot, but.
That's our, that's the point of, if we can move it back to two, we wouldn't, you know, we would seed the whole rest of the grass then.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to be sensitive to his request to us initially that he's got a lot of time into that piece of earth. So I'm trying to work, I'm trying to work that in for him. Maybe it could be something, if at all possible, preference could be given to that same plot, but if it doesn't work out and there's a, there's a space there that we're just gonna have to move up, you know, I would, if at all possible, um, preference should be given to getting the same plot the next year, but if, like for instance, if, you know, one drew four and then there's nothing for five and six, you know, we're gonna have to move that person in seven back to five.
I don't know, you know, the reality is, is I think, other than the two at Northridge, we only have one person can do that. So there's not really a high demand, seems like we're spending a lot of time and effort for.
I, I, a couple of thoughts there, I expect that to, recognition to, to grow.
That could be.
Later, or next year.
Could we table and just visit it next year?
Well, it says when possible, so.
But Northridge, so this has always been full, I don't hear any.
There's just four.
That's why we started with the rapaho.
Yeah, there's only four lots out there, or four garden plots.
So I, I think out there it could just stay the same.
Yeah, yeah, and there, there's no, not really planned room for expansion out there because there's other things that aren't gonna take up for that. So I, I don't know, I said my piece, you know, if you guys wanna take it off, that's fine.
What does he got on there, take one and three?
No, I was just throwing out home area.
Well, we have on there, it says it'll be allowed the same plot when possible, so I think, you know.
That works for me, but yeah.
The other thing we added, um, that Sean wanted added, and it's on both the application and the rules, is we reserve the right to close the garden if necessary with proper notification to all gardeners. That doesn't mean that come July first or July thirty-first, we're gonna say we're tilling your garden up there, you know, it would be a matter of, like out at Rapaho, if only one person is out there, we're not gonna continue to till ten plots or something if we close it or, you know, make it smaller, and it wouldn't be after the growing season, you know, we wouldn't do it during the gardening season. Or next year, if you wanted to build something there, there's no guarantee your garden is still.
Just so we can make everybody happy and nobody comes in with a bunch of weed killers and sprays all over your garden, and we really have a headache.
So that was, um, I guess it's the recommendation of the council approval with those changes up to the council, is what, do they want to move? Yeah, no ones on the, other. Yeah, both of them.
Sprinklers not allowed, on page thirty-six.
Meaning don't, we won't allow you to hook your sprinkler up to the hydrant and leave and let it sprinkle for two hours. So that's, that's what it says.
So you can bring your sprinkler, but.
Can't hook up.
It's gotta be ten? Okay.
So you can use the sprinkler? I think their intent was, I think the park commission's intent was that they, there's no sprinklers for the fact that to hook it up and then leave and come back an hour or two later, if you're gonna be out there, you need to just water your, you know, your garden. I don't know many people who hook up the sprinkler, I guess, while they're out there, but most would just stand and water.
There may be, should, there may be a change, sorry. Your council, there may, there could be a change, just no unattended use of sprinklers or something, or instead of that.
We could probably combine those two, where it's a sprinkler's not allowed or unattended use of water is not allowed, we could probably combine them into one that says, yeah, we're gonna have no intended.
What, so sprinklers, use of sprinklers?
They have wood around these, yet windy and twenty by twenty, or no wood around the plot, so it's easier to till. So if you have closing date on November first, windy, and there's stuff still out there in that garden, does the city gotta pull it, or you contact the owner and then pull it?
What we talked about at the park meeting, Sean was there at the time still, was usually by November first, everything is dead or froze. If it's an exceptional year where things are still growing, we're not gonna force you to get everything out of there at that date, it's, that's just a date set, so people don't have things out there yet come Christmas and it's all snowed on, or, so it's, you know, a date we'd like to enforce and if, if everything is froze, you need to get your stuff out. If it's still growing like a few years ago, or you could, it was December twenty-fourth, you can still wear shorts, we probably aren't gonna pull your tomatoes out, but.
Most certainly, uh, if the gardener desires to keep it in after November first, it's up to them to contact the city, we're not gonna go and contact them.
Cause nothing will be in wait until we till it, but follow sprinklings.
Correct, the only liability would be if it gets covered with snow and, you know, forget something happened.
So we need a motion to approve this for Park and Rec. and Fair Garden.
Okay, I'm trying to motion here to accept the changes that we've got from the Park and Rec. with the exception of removing the disregard required tilling in spring. And how about this, unattended use of water or sprinklers is not allowed?
Yeah, we have to just combine them.
To be accepted as the community garden application rule regulations.
I'll second that. Motion by Mark, second by Ben, to approve the community garden application for specification of regulations that are allowed. Ben, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye, Mark?
Aye.
Floyd?
Aye.
Motion carried for all.
Also in that same motion, the park had added a part about public works adding an ice rink in Northridge Park. I don't know if we wanna talk about that now or discuss it at a later date when it's due winter or close to winter.
It's, it's in very preliminary design, so certainly more room to talk about.
We can discuss it later, okay.
So, Ken, let's, garden rules, okay, the garden rules are, are taken care of, can we, can we push that back another?
Ice rink?
Yeah.
Yeah, Sean said he, it's in the preliminary stages, so he'll give more information to you as we move on. On the next item that they asked the council to take action on, was they recommended council purchasing and installing a solar powered light in Pezzin Hills Park. We talked about that last council meeting when we talked about the light on Mainy Lane and the park commission thought that was a great idea to pursue that, looked into the cost installation of it, Mark had the other, a few things on it, but they thought it would be a good place to put a light and test them to see how they would work, so the possibility of putting them in other parks or along other trails where we couldn't, really don't have power. So they were looking for a motion on that, and I, I think we were gonna work, Sean, possibly myself, and then we'll get, you know, look into lights, I guess, and Mark, Mark had some things gathered, so we looked into the cost of those.
I haven't had a second to look at it, so.
Yeah, do you want a motion on that, uh, to just proceed with that then, or, or do you want to, uh?
Should have something.
Just have the council direct Sean and yourself to gather more information so that they, you know, I gave three examples of high cost, the low cost, right? I would like, you know.
I think that'd be fine.
You just have to look at that and see, hey, this one's gonna work because we've got wood poles, this one's not gonna work because we needed metal poles or, or whatever the deal is.
I think you could direct them to proceed with gathering information and make a recommendation to council.
All right, I make a motion to authorize Sean and Wendy to go ahead with gathering the information and costs so that they can bring a recommendation forth to the council.
I'll second that. Okay, so we got a second amendment for Wendy and Sean to look in for solar light for Pezzin Hills Park. Mark made a motion, Lloyd seconded it, I'll vote aye. Mark?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Motion carried for all.
Couple other things they touched on, the school, I think Michelle, I met with, council member Michelle, I met with someone at the school, and they said that if we would like to put a flyer together prior to school being held this summer, they would be willing to send it home with all the students, highlighting all of the things that we have available for them in the summer in our parks, such as Spark, the nature center behind the school, our skateboard park, our disc golf. So commission member Sue White agreed to work on a flyer, and she'll get it back to us at City Hall, she'll email it back to us to look at and get over to the school for them to send out.
So that will include our, our existing park's flyer and, uh, like Spark information?
Yeah, I don't know if we'll send our actual flyer with them, but it would be information off of that flyer, just on a one-page, you know, just a one-page thing like this they agreed to send home, so. Commission member Jesse Lesnow would like to work with staff regarding putting some information on the website for parks, kinda like a link, so he's, he's a school teacher, so he'd like to come in and jewel and study his teaching and look into that to see what he can kinda come up with, so, we'll keep you posted on that.
We, uh, to, to maybe, can you, they are, go back up to the volunteers for the, to the lines of looking for volunteers that will construct the playground? If Jesse gets going on that, we can use the city's website and Facebook to put the word out for volunteers?
Yep. One last thing is, because of all of our parks, I think last year we did a kind of a cleanup where we got everybody together on Saturday, anybody that wanted to volunteer to come out and kinda help clean up our parks, but we happen to have a chance to do that this year. So during the discussion, it was brought up that maybe we should try doing like an adopt a park or adopt a trail. So, actually, here it says I was gonna put together a flyer, but council member Otto put one together and brought it up to City Hall, we're gonna make a few tweaks in it and get it out to all the businesses, to the organizations, we'll put it on our website and Facebook, if any individuals want to, we'll get adopting one. They would, we have garbage bags and stuff here, they can pick up a garbage bag and just go out to the park and clean it up. If they adopt a park, we can look into getting a sign, we, we have the sign man that makes signs for us, like I have with the disc golf course, and he's real reasonable. We could put a sign up by that park or trail that says this park has been adopted by a certain group or business and advertise, you know, to promote their business or promote the organizations showing up, they are helping clean up the city, so we'll get that flyer, flyer out, I guess, and council member Otto brought it in, so we'll get it taken care of and get it out to everybody to see about getting, to do with adopting the trails, the park, and also the landscaping on Highway 12, if anybody likes to do gardening, get that taken care of.
So we could put that, the whole flyer on the website so that people could, you know, just like, my wife and myself want to adapt the, the trail out there or something like that too. Will, so Park and Rec. can take the lead on that as far as approaching the scouts, girls' scouts.
Correct. We have most of the addresses, most of the contacts at City also.
Yeah, this, this brings up, uh, this stuff, our commission's not interested in taking their Highway 12 landscaping, but would like to try starting a, so the first part of that, the commission is not interested in taking care of Highway 12 landscaping. I realize it's just the commission, not a park board, but this exposes the problem to council. We just kinda did some quick math last week and the flowers and the wiring and the maintenance, maintenance of the flower yard and stuff on Highway 12, the weeding and stuff, um, is costing us about twenty-five hundred dollars at least in a summer, uh, which is a concern for me because the Highway 12 commission decided that they wanted these things, but now we're taking care of and we're abandoning. I would like to see volunteer groups or somebody else step up, uh, gardening. I would like to see volunteer groups or somebody else step up, garden groups, somebody else step up and carry burden on this. I know even last year the mayor drove the water truck out there a few times, didn't you?
Yeah, about fifteen times or better, and I did believe you, too.
Hopefully if we do the adopt a trail or adopt a park, somebody will, somebody likes to garden, we'll take those out, because we have the signs, both ends of the city do have the signs.
Will? Will, when Jesse gets going on the website, will you guys put out the appeal then? Will will Park and Rec take the lead on asking for volunteers for that? You guys would have to get with Highway 12 commission as well.
Actually, when we do the adopt a park and adopt a trail, when we do that flyer, we're gonna add the Highway 12 landscaping in.
We did some discussion on that, though. Too many plans each of you, we had some discussion on that.
You you understand my concern, though, is that I don't want to hire a temporary summer person to do that. When we've got, Sean's got plenty of stuff for them to do and not have to expend the.
I know where you're coming from, because I went jump up here, run a clarks up here and then bring clippers and that stuff to cut the burdock's off because they were too heavy to pull out of the ground, and that's why I cut all that stuff off there.
Don't you worry, I don't want to turn wrong either, but I would like to see volunteers.
Um, the last thing I have is we added to the agenda the purchasing of a cooler for at the community, or at the ballpark. The little cooler that was in there, that was probably many, many, many years old, I think it's been there since the Montrose Association was around. It died, so there's nothing to put pop and things in, brought it to concession stand. Michelle's been searching all over. She contacted Bernix Pepsi and I'm, she was gonna try to contact my D. Coke to see if anybody would have one, they would donate. She hasn't been successful in getting one donated. Bernix did get back to her and said, um, we could purchase one of this one cooler that's on this picture for three hundred dollars. So I guess what we're asking for now, but she's gonna keep looking because she doesn't really want to spend three hundred dollars on one. So she's gonna keep searching, but I guess what we're looking for now is the council to just make a motion to approve up to three hundred dollars, so hopefully we can find something cheaper. If not, we may have to go with one of these for three hundred because we need to put something in there to store her pop and Gatorade and things in for people to purchase at the ballgames. And I know the Little League games start next Monday, the nineteenth, so.
Do you do the average companies lease these?
No, they didn't, they didn't offer to lease them, they only offered to sell it to her, because we don't purchase their products from them.
Yeah, but for what price do we?
We go, she just goes out and buys it because it's a lot cheaper to go out and purchase it like at Walmart or Sam's Club. The pop machine here in the community center, we were getting from, we had from Bernix Pepsi. And they actually have given to us now, but prior to that, we had to buy Pepsi products to put in there. And I think that was six, seven years ago, and they were at ten dollars a case at that time because of the delivery, and I think the minimum you can get is ten cases. So but it's before you go to that much pop, it gets outdated. So if you don't use, if you don't buy from them, they don't give you that opportunity.
So we have, um, did you talk about the boosters money?
We have money left over when the when there was the Montrose boosters in town. They had money left over when the when they went awry or they're no longer around. And there was about eight hundred dollars, a little over eight hundred dollars left in the booster club or the booster organization that came to the city. So we put that into a fund for the concession stand, so there's eight hundred dollars there to purchase equipment for the concession stand. So there's there's money there to be used, but like I said, she's gonna keep searching to see if she can't get something cheaper.
Is insurance going to cover the recent vandalism? It wasn't enough to cover the deductible.
Yeah, we have a five hundred dollar deductible, yeah.
So she's gonna keep looking up until what she feels is a drop dead date, I guess. All right, uh, I make a motion that we authorize the expenditure of up to three hundred dollars for the purchase of a cooler for, um.
Concession stand.
Concession stand, I think.
I'll second that motion. Motion by Mark, seconded by Ben, Mark for the cooler.
Mark, do you vote?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I vote no. Motion three, oh, three, one.
I think that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, then we'll move on personnel, employee reviews. You want to say anything, Sean?
Well, I'm not the only member on the committee, so I believe somebody else can speak up. You on the committee?
I am, so smart. Um, we reviewed all four employees last Tuesday. They're all doing good work. We feel that they're entitled to a pay increase as listed. We'll ask the city council to make a motion to approve approve the pay increases as recommended.
I believe too that across the board, these are just another step increase, that's a five percent step increase. Also, if you guys aren't aware, Dan got his class speed water license, so he was pretty happy about that, so we.
Well, I'll make a motion to improve improve employee reviews for what they're doing and everything, and they're doing a great job.
I'll second that.
Motion by him, seconded by Mark.
Lloyd, do you vote?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mark?
Aye.
Motion carried for oral. Okay, then we move on to public works, hiring seasonal employees.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. You have to bear with me, I'm not feeling very good tonight. Last month, I came before the council to seek permission to advertise an interview for two seasonal positions. We have done that, apologize for not getting the paperwork in at press time, but I was still conducting interviews as it was being printed, so we have the paperwork in front of you tonight. We had four applications, um, the worst turnout ever for a seasonal position. Out of the four, we interviewed two and we're recommending to the council tonight to hire Matthew Reamer and Louis Clifton to fill these positions. Matthew's tentative start date is next Monday, as soon as he gets out of school. And Louis's tentative start date will be the following Monday, once he's done with school also, and they'll be working up until they go back to school, either late August or early September. As it was discussed last month, the hourly wage will be ten dollars an hour.
Are there either one of these or any of them from Montrose, Sean, or?
The one from Montrose is why. Three from Buffalo and one from West Side.
I'll make a motion to, um, direct Sean to proceed with hiring Matthew Reamer and Louis Clifton for the temporary positions.
I'll second that. Motion by Mark, seconded by Lloyd, to hire Matthew Reamer and Louis Clifton for these temporary positions. Lloyd, do you vote?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I, Mark?
Aye.
Motion carried for oral.
Thank you.
Okay, we move into old business compo site update, commercial fee.
I have asked Andy, I thought perhaps we needed ordinance to set a fee for commercial use of the compo site, but we do not, we can just add it to our fee schedule. So if you would, I think we talked about fifty dollars for the year, and so if you would make a motion to set that fee, I will update the ordinance for our next council meeting.
Make a motion to set the fee for the commercial. Uh, what?
Compost.
The commercial compost fee.
Okay, commercial compost fee at fifty dollars.
I'll second that motion. Motion by Mark, seconded by Ben, to update the commercial fee for fifty dollars for compo site. I vote aye. Mark?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Motion carried for oral.
And the stickers have been ordered and we expect them this week. You know, I I gave you an update, Pat gave me another update from this last week, which is nice, and we have had quite a few people out there, sounds like you've been doing, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And, um, I'll let you know when the stickers are.
I have one question regarding the commercial dumping. Are we talking just leaves, grass, or are we talking, uh, trees and limbs also? I, we really didn't discuss that. I thought at our last discussion, we were pretty much talking about lawn services. As you see in my report, I did have one tree service that's local here, uh, ask about dumping, so.
He did, he did come up to city hall.
Okay, so I I just need clarification on that from council and Sean as to are we gonna allow, uh, tree disposal if they have a commercial sticker? Or are we just gonna do trees and grass?
Sean, you see a problem with that?
I'm okay with it.
I think I can put my two cents worth in, by the sounds of it, when he came up to city hall, it sounded like he has the same permits in other cities, too, they allow him. He said he would only dump from what he takes from this city, too, he wouldn't bring it from any other city. So it sounded like he, other cities do allow him to do that, too.
I just need your clarification, so I'm not turning away somebody if they do trees and lawns and then they come in with, you know, I just want to make sure that we're all on the right track, so we don't have any headaches coming our direction.
General opinion that, uh, trees and.
No, from the local citizens, yeah.
That stops them.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, from the commercial side, take a local.
It does, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Would we need, uh, should we protect ourselves or so we don't end up with truckloads of trees coming in and everybody saying, oh, I cut this tree down or that tree down? Should, if it's, if a residence is gonna, resident is gonna have a tree done, is there any way we, there's really no way we can verify it, so. I guess if we see a lot of trees coming in, we need to talk.
Back to your question, I'm gonna go to his property and see what he's doing. Call me and have a look to see what he's doing.
Well, last year we ran into that problem, we dug well, there wasn't any trees being cut down in town, just for the fact that we're all over the place. We get there, kept being truckloads and truckloads and truckloads of trees being, oh, man, and we ended up following out between here and Buffalo and it ceased as we followed them out, so.
Well, the mayor needed some authorization, so I got it in writing, and if we have a problem, I'll just follow some of your own. Report back to the.
The defendant, you're good judgment, Pat.
Otherwise, all in all, everything's been well at the compo site, had a couple of small instances out there, um, but it's been well received. And I'm happy even as a resident, that my fellow residents that have been using the site are very happy with what we decided as, not like residents, but the council administrator and department that's decided to do with this this season, speed on borders.
Any other concerns?
No, everything's good.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Thanks, bro.
He loved it.
Now we're happy, son.
Okay, then we'll move on to Rock Brook, rest water retention fountain update, Justin.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council, uh, we did get the survey completed out there. Uh, I I reviewed the survey, I reviewed the results, looked at some maps, looked at past history of the area. I would like to review those specific results with you guys and and probably with the residents in that area. I thought it was maybe, or if we was a group, it's maybe a bit much to go over the the details of that this evening, but certainly would like to go over those details with you, so. If the council's in agreement, perhaps we could set a small work session or something in that order to review them and provide, provide the ability to explain it to the residents fully, too.
Yeah, that's fine with me, I'm just trying to look at time or date.
What date do you get open, Justin?
Um, you pick a date and I'll tell you if I'm available, for the most part, I'm fairly available. Yeah, it, um.
What date did you say, Justin, I'm sorry?
I just said, um, you pick a date and I'll let you know if it's available.
Well, council member Otto's available on Wednesdays or Tuesdays.
So the, well, the more lady would want to do it, then.
Next Tuesday, next Tuesday, is that Tuesday?
Twenty, twenty fifth Sunday, Tuesday.
We have a, um, personnel meeting in the morning, we can do that in the afternoon, Mark, if that works for you guys.
Works for me. That works for me.
Twentieth in the afternoon, next Tuesday.
Later afternoon?
Yes, like what time is good for you?
The later the date is better.
Two thirty?
Three.
Three, four, five.
Yeah, you're in there.
Staff, staff, what is it, four thirty, it's home?
Somewhere three, three thirty, four, whatever works in there. How much time do you think you need, Justin?
I don't think we need over an hour.
Three thirty, okay, at city hall?
At city hall.
Can I apply my off from my job to do this?
We'll think about that.
You need to fill out an application before requesting time off, and that needs to be done one week prior to.
And to get council approval, so we'll be done with you.
Sean, help me, man.
It'll be May twentieth, three thirty, then, and we need to say to all?
Yeah, I'll send out notice.
Okay, and we'll get to see National Night Out.
I put this on the agenda because I wanted to verify that we're holding it this year and food will, has been served in the past, and if it's gonna be served again, the city needs to get the permit, so we're in compliance with the state of Minnesota, and I just wanted to verify all that before we went through the effort.
Okay, now do we get a permit, we can just, like we did before?
Yep, with the hot dish and the root beer floats, yep. And it's, you know, it's city funds, you know, I know Sylvia said she would head it up and do that, she's not there tonight, you know, ask that. So, um, but if she's going to do that, if we're gonna hold it, a bed's gonna be held, then we need to apply for the permit.
Okay, now, this permit deal has been heard three times. Okay, now, this permit deal has been for three times in here, right?
Three city events.
Yeah, okay, now Montrose Days, did they even get a permit for Montrose Days, too?
Yep. Um, each individual organization that will sell during Montrose Days needs to, um, get their own permit.
Okay, each one?
Yeah.
If a guy got his permit for three events, then a guy could use it for once for National Night Out and a couple of others.
Well, be the city.
Yeah.
So, so the city would have to host it. So, but we could use it if we had the volunteers dinner. So we could, um, National Night Out, the volunteers dinner, and...
Do you mean like the volunteers dinner?
Probably not.
It's by invitation, I'm all right.
We don't hold anything else. National Night Out, but we need it.
Yep, 'cause the people really enjoy it.
Well, we need the permits and everything. So if that's, if we know we're doing it up, we'll go ahead and do the paperwork on it.
Well, I'd say we go ahead with it. We appreciate it. A lot of other people would be happy with it. Yeah, I, I second that, too. Because we get volunteers, they come from the bank and everything, different ones come to help. Mark, go ahead, hope a lot of the lines, yeah, the line, volunteer nurses.
I don't think so. I just wanted to make sure we were, I just still want to get the permit for no reason.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, now we'll move on to Trailblazer Public Transportation in Wright County. Mark?
So, as Mark said, um, he's been attending some of these events and I have as well, and there's ten cities involved, and we're working on, on a joint powers agreement. And what I'm looking for from the city council, I mean, we can have as much discussion on this as you want, and I kind of gave you an overview of work. The group is in the process of, uh, of the agreement. Um, I gave, I put out probably the most recent draft of the agreement, and actually we updated it again before the end of the week, and the respective cities will send it out to their city attorneys for the attorney review, and then we hope to have it signed, so we can begin negotiating an agreement with Trailblazer. When we first started talking about it, we talked about, uh, cost per capita. In the new agreement, we changed that to, um, the cost will be based on the number of riders, so, on ridership. So, for instance, if the city of Buffalo has ten thousand, they'll pay more than the city of Montrose, who would maybe have a hundred, you know, so it'll be based on the rides, and so that makes a lot more sense, really, representation. Um, the program will start with six buses and increase to twelve, uh, between now and 2016. There will be some transportation provided at this time, and it'll just increase as the buses and availability is, um, increases with more buses. So, I think it's a wonderful opportunity for Montrose. This program applies only to the cities, the townships. Township riders will not be picked up. This is strictly for city residents because the county isn't providing the program, just the cities. So, um, the first operating year, it's kind of unclear how we're gonna fund. Between now and 2015, there may be, um, capital outlay and then refunded at the end of the year after the number of rides there were. So that's, that's kind of an unknown at this minute. So, you know, I do know that beginning 2015, each city will put in a thousand dollars for administrative fees, which will cover attorneys and all the legalities. And, and then we'll try to establish, try to guess how many riders we're gonna have and pay back, and then at the end of the year, we reconcile to the actual numbers and straighten out the books and stuff. So, if we guess we're gonna have two hundred riders and we pay for that and we only had a hundred and fifty, then we refund it to those fifty. Or if we say we have two hundred and we have two fifty, then we'll have to pay for that extra fifty. So, it's kind of an unknown until we get everything up and running. So what I'm looking for tonight is a motion from the city council to allow us, allow the city to proceed with the joint powers agreement, to allow, um, Mark and myself to continue working with the other cities, and to allow Mayor Henry and myself to sign it upon completion.
The, right now the ten cities are, are, uh, working on the joint powers agreement, and then they will basically form a board that, that then puts forth two members to sit on the...
Trailblazer.
Sit with the other four members of the, 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 two from each county.
Right.
And, and then it would be two representing Wright County from the cities, for the cities of Wright County. Okay.
Well, also, um, leaving this open, so if the county wants to become a partner, there'll be a way for that to happen. If a township wants to be a partner, there's a way for that to happen. So, you know, it's unfortunate that the county board was unable to do this because it really should be for everybody in the county. But in lieu of that, the cities felt strongly that they had to protect and continue with public transportation, and that's why this came about.
And my, my major concern, Council, is that, um, right now, like I said before, the, the cities on Highway Twelve, other than Delano, are mostly underserved.
Absolutely.
And realizing that we're smaller than Buffalo and Monticello, but, um, in the future, thi- this route could really explode as far as, you know, people need to get from Montrose to your supreme, or, or points even farther west. Um, and so my major concern and the reason that I wanted to be involved going forward is to make sure that the little guys don't get forgotten in this, this big thing.
Have they decided how much it is to charge, though, per ride, or...
Yeah, it looks like it's gonna be, uh, six dollars per ride. That's door to door, is that correct?
Door to door, and that may be on the high side.
But that's one way?
Round trip?
Round trip, door to door.
Round trip, okay. Because I've heard that some charged, oh, they're in charge to give that.
But you know what, and I don't know the exact numbers.
Yeah, this is, it, it, it really, um... When you get ten cities trying to work this all out, and all ten cities have to have their attorneys look at this before they give the final thumbs up on this agreement. There's a whole lot to get through. There have been a lot of meetings in the past three weeks.
And they aren't over yet.
Right.
So, um, tomorrow there's a board meeting. Uh, Thursday there's a board meeting with Trailblazer in Glencoe. You know, they just keep going. Now, I'm not planning on attending those. There's other people, other cities that are going to get the information, so everybody doesn't have to go all the time. And there's numbers that we need provided to the cities from River Rider that can tell us which cities had how many riders and all of that. We don't have all of that information. What we do know, July first, River Rider will be operating.
And you always think that six thirty in the morning to five thirty at night?
So you could call Trailblazer and say, "I need to be picked up at nine o'clock on Thursday morning." And they will set you up, so it would be like either ten minutes, within twenty minutes of nine, ten before, ten after. You know, pick you up at your door, take you to your destination, and then make, you'll make arrangements to come home. And if it's, let's say they're, um, they're passing through here from Cohato with eight people on the bus and there's still four more seats, they'll pick you up. Could be, um, seven in the morning, if they're, if it's a functional industry run even, and there's empty seats, they'll still pick up people in Montrose.
Well, probably could be still...
To Delano, they'll stay within Wright County.
Okay, so I'll make a motion for Mark to go ahead. Has to be done for public transportation in Wright County. I'll second your motion. Second by Ben, uh, or go ahead, public transportation in Wright County. I vote aye. Mark?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Motion carried forward. Okay.
I, I just wanna clarify this. So, what I wrote at the bottom, is this what your motion is, then? To proceed with the joint powers agreement to allow Proctor and Swanson to continue working with the other cities on the joint powers agreement and to allow Mayor Henry and Swanson to sign the joint powers agreement when complete?
Aye.
Yes, that was your motion?
Aye. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, then we move on to A and P Webinars table from April. Yeah, that works. Okay.
Um, what I found on the webinars is, I think that although LEED, the Subcity webinars, are free of charge.
Yep.
So, um, I don't know what webinars council member Otto was looking at, but, um, I think it would be best to stick with the LEED Minnesota City webinars. I think there's plenty of information out there, unless there's something specific that she was looking at that the LEED doesn't offer.
No, she was gonna try and have information for us at the next meeting. She's not here, so I suggest that we table it.
To June?
To June, and then if she has more information on that, because I, you know, this weekend watched, there have been a lot of free webinars, uh, from LEED Minnesota Cities. Let's see if they cover, if they have it. But rather than make that decision without further ado, uh... Let's just put it on until June.
All right. We'll just table that until June, Council meeting on webinars. Okay, then we'll move into new business. Got Ben done, so we'll move on to Windstream Communications.
I'm gonna turn that over, Andy.
Yes, Mayor Council, we, uh, as you know, we, there's been some back and forth with Windstream Communications and Kenny, Kenny Graven, um, on the issue of the core service serving the city. I, uh, left a few voicemails with a couple of different people there, so, um, I'm not sure I can remember exactly who I left with. It's John Shield, that name might be new to me. So, um, that was a, one of his names, Barbara came by, remember the, the name, I'll go back in my phone and look. And, uh, clearly we have some, some issues here, and, and I'm not as familiar with, with what, you know, some of the residents might have as core service, so we're, we're gonna look into that and keep on them. And one of the things you can do is kind of call them before the Public Utilities Commission to, to do a further investigation, hold a public hearing on that. And that's something obviously that that company's not gonna wanna have to go through. So that's sort of our stick that we can hold over them at this point, at least. So, um, by the next meeting, I would, I would hope to have a report or memo of some kind as to getting back to somebody, having a teleconference on what would be done.
This John Shield never replied to this letter, so we have a...
Well, they're eating out of banana deal anymore, that's folded up up there. Some other outfit, like the building. So everything's done, all on a Charlotte North Carolina.
They do have an office in Big Lake, though.
They got one in Big Lake, huh?
So, but I, I think, you know, Andy's right, we need to do whatever we can to get better service. My understanding is that people call, they're kept on hold for an hour, and then somebody finally answers the phone and they're not able to help them anyway. And, um, we've had trouble with internet. We've had situations where people haven't had internet access for a couple of days. And it's one thing when it's your, your home personal internet, it's another thing when you're a banker or, uh, you know, a business trying to, trying to access, you know, or click pattern or whatever it is. You know, I mean, when you're out of, you don't have internet for two, three days on end and Windstream doesn't respond to your situation, you know, that's just unacceptable.
I don't know where we can get your telephone outfit to tell you. When Linky had the service was great, tell this outfit to...
Yeah, it really went south, didn't it?
So, we, uh, what, what I hear you saying is that, um, one way or another, you're gonna have a response from them to us, or you're gonna have an action plan.
Right. And I mean, I think certainly we'll give them the opportunity to respond to this correspondence. Um, the name of the person, I looked it up here, Kristi Moody, Deputy, Deputy General Counsel, Windstream Little Rock Gardens. I mean, it's, it might be hard for me to keep track of who's complaining who. And then the regulatory council was copied on this letter, this is your packet, named me. So, that's sort of our two contact per people, but, um, I would, I would agree with that action plan, that. In the next meeting, you'll either have a response from them, which we can discuss, or we'll have an action plan. If you don't get a response saying, "We're done, we're sort of done negotiating with them, and here's the way that we're gonna deal with that," so, yeah. So there's really no action tonight, then, and then just some information.
Okay. Who you want, uh, A and Z reward for burglary?
Actually, this was a council member Otto's item, but, um, following, the concession stand was burglarized again, you know, broke into last week, I think. And she asked if we could offer a reward, and, um, Andy looked into it for us and he said, "Yes, we could, if it is a felony."
Yeah, yes, so, it's sort of a fuzzy area. The, the city can really only spend public monies on public purpose expenditures. So, um, giving a reward for something, uh, there's been some old Attorney General opinions saying when you can do that and you can, uh, and they try to draw a line of demarcation at a felony level offense of, of something that's burglarized. Um, the problem here is that, I was talking, I talked earlier to Councilor Otto about the specific situation that happened. It can be hard to, to know whether it's a felony, a felony level offense when you're just hearing about, you know, somebody broke in and they, I think last time they took a whole bunch of inventory. Recently, they broke in and they didn't take much of anything, but it's, it's basically the intent to commit a crime unless you have broken into the, uh, facility determines how high the offense is. I'm not a criminal prosecutor, so, uh, I might have butchered that a little bit, but that's generally the, the line of demarcation. So, um, I'm comfortable with having the city put up some money for a reward for leading the information to find, you know, the people who were doing this. I mean, that's within your, your discretion policy. So I'm, I'm here with that from a legal perspective, uh, because you just don't know what they're gonna do and it might trash the whole place, and that could be thousands of dollars, something. to repair this and everything. The council should decide what you want parameters and what you want to put up for a, a reward, though, I mean, your discretion.
So it'd be like a reward leading to the conviction of anything?
Well, I guess at lea- at least the arrest of.
Yeah, but then you might have a Christian conviction. Maybe you can say it's a Christian conviction.
Suppose I could run that by the.
Yeah, I mean, it, I wrote, seriously, administrator breaking into a building without consent with the intent to steal constitutes a felony level offense as far as what I've reviewed from the statute, so that allows you to, to let me reward.
So, would you want to pull it up?
Or do you want to?
And if it keeps getting damaged, it's just going to cause more repairs because we've got 500 to take, like you said. Because I know that back door was kicked in a couple of times.
Also, for your information, council, Mr. Mayor, we are making changes to that door this week, so short of using a chainsaw, I don't think you'll ever get in again. So I'll just leave that up for your information. I'm not going to go any further than that until it's out.
Do you want to get a reward on your council or? See if anybody could come forward, I'd say let's put a reward out of about 250 bucks and see if anybody comes forward.
I guess I would think of that, you know? To not do something that you almost, to, to don't know what's going on and tell.
Well, maybe open some young kids' eyes and stuff, and help step forward. We can see who's doing much of this damage in Montrose.
Really good.
Yet it wouldn't hurt, we can say if you don't get anybody, it would cost us nothing.
Should I, should I visit with Greg Finley tomorrow morning when he stops by City Hall about it? And see what he has, see what he thinks, if it's worth, if it's worth doing?
Well, if we can get somebody to come forward, Mark, and go to, maybe we done the damage, and if they got paid out of their pocket, they're doing community service for the city of Montrose. Maybe some of these other kids around town here, see what's being done, and this is what's going to happen, and it's continuing.
Sure, yeah. I, I mean, I agree with that. I'm just saying, maybe as the, as an officer for Wright County, he would know if it's worthwhile to do that event, and just run it by him.
Run it by him, see what he tells you.
See what he has to say.
Okay.
Do we already see where the controls go or anything like that?
Well, council member Otto was over there today, and she was cleaning up there today, and a deputy came in to check, so they're paying attention to it.
Where is it? Mark's going to talk about extending hours or mixing up the hours, kind of a good coverage. It seems to me that since Casey's kind of 24 hours, that we've noticed some individuals to 30, 3 o'clock in the morning.
That all got to say, walk in front of my house sometime, at that time.
Should we, should we make a motion to just authorize that if, if Officer Finley thinks it's a good idea to, like, up to 250 dollars?
That's what I would say, is if we do get anybody to come forward. If we do get somebody to come forward, then they start pushing the issue a little more.
Right, make a motion to pre-authorize a reward of 250 dollars contingent on whether or not Officer Finley thinks that it's a, a correct route for the arrest.
And conviction, you say?
Same conviction. Of the individual or individuals that did damage to a-
Driver.
City driver.
I'll second that. Motion by Mark, second by Lloyd, to prove the 250 dollar reward for information leading to conviction of whoever damages the city property over a concession stand. I vote aye. Ben?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Motion carried forward. I got one question on this national night out, taking out, Mark. We do like we did last year, buy the stuff and then turn every seat into you and collect money from the city.
Right, and I think we have about 700 dollars, so you shouldn't have to fundraise at all. And we'll, the, the permit will be 90 dollars, so that leaves you 600 dollars.
Because Casey usually gives me a free tank of gas, and mine will up here, it won't cost us nothing, our gas. Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Last year, my neighborhood, the only neighborhood in Montrose, did a national night out. Would they have to get this permit too? Because it is serving the public, but it is on-
I think it's the neighborhood, but I think it's because it's more of a private party, it's just your neighborhood.
Yeah.
I don't think that it would have to.
Okay, I, maybe there's checking into it with the state. What do you think, yeah? You think that there's?
It could go either way, maybe if it is open to the public.
Yeah.
But you're not an organization, so somebody personally would have to pull the permit, and then you're responsible. Whoever pulls the permit is responsible. So if it is a neighborhood block party, if you don't have a neighborhood association, whereas association would pull the permit, it would be somebody within your neighborhood. And that's a lot of responsibility in one family.
Right. Well, the other thing too is, I know, Joe, even the state, I talked about paper trail, if there is an insulator to the city as far as if somebody would get sick.
But you're not, you're not holding it in a city building. I mean, I know you're on the street, but you're also in individual yards and things like that.
Kind of a city event.
I don't think so. I think it's a neighborhood block party.
Yeah.
Under, under the national night out program, which is a federal program.
Right, I mean, somebody from the other-
Block party on the same night.
I think as long as you don't advertise it on Highway 12, and they see the advertising on it.
But somebody from, you know, another neighborhood.
It's your neighborhood, so.
Somebody from another neighborhood's not going to come, so it per se is kind of like a private party. And they're not going to come from another neighborhood or across town or to join doors.
It's like a graduation party at your house, you don't need a permit for that.
Right, but the, the, the fair park, park did show up, and people from other neighborhoods did show up, so, you know, we have crossed those lines.
But like she said, you're not advertising, it's open to the public type of thing, so.
Right.
Okay, any other business?
Just a reminder, no meeting, no second meeting this month because it's Memorial Day weekend. And we'll have a special meeting the 20th, May 20th at 3:30 at City Hall.
And acknowledgement, I'd like to acknowledge four workers for the Great Cab and Sean giving two workers for the summer, and Pat there for the good job out at Compostown.
Good evening.
Any other acknowledgements?
I have one, if I could. I'd like to acknowledge Sean, Jason, and Dan, number two, as he's referred to.
D2.
D2, for all the work they've been putting into our compost site out there. Conditions haven't been the best, but it's looking good. And if I ask Sean, bought anything, or ask the guys if they could push the piles up, they're getting a little wide, he's right on it. Jason and Dan have been doing a real good job. As a resident and a volunteer out there, I appreciate Sean and his guys, they do a heck of a job for us. Lot that people don't see within the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean, thank you guys out there. So I guess we need a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion for adjournment.
Second. Motion by Lloyd. Second by Lloyd, favor. Aye. Motion carried forward.